Okay, it looks like we have the green light. So I will call this meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for November 19th of 2024. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quaidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Misty, your mic is just a little bit quiet. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. We have quite a few here tonight. Our city council meeting minutes from November 5th, Public Works Board minutes from September 10th, Parks Board minutes from both September 9th and October 14th, and then Ad-Hoc Committee on Urban Forest Management, we have two minutes, sets of minutes from September 23rd and October 28th. So are there any comments or reports from committee members or corrections to any of these minutes? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll put those into our public record. Our next item is the Joint Rock Lake Committee report. And I got an email from Wendy Davies, who is the chair earlier today, and she's got laryngitis and was not able to line up a substitute. So she just, in her email, she just sent me a couple of sentences that we wanted, she wanted me to share for the record. So the Joint Rock Lake Committee is preparing recommendations to present to the Town of Lake Mills Board regarding the operation of boats with wake-enhanced technology on Rock Lake. The Joint Rock Lake is doing a presentation on December 2nd at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers at City Hall, followed by a public input session. So that's a, they're gathering public input before they finalize their recommendations. So that's on Monday, December 2nd at 6:00 PM. And she said, "Joint Rock Lake Committee wants to hear what people have to say about wake-enhanced technology use on Rock Lake." So that's the report that I got from Wendy. Okay, moving on to correspondence. Michelle, can I start with you?
Sure. Kind of a quiet couple of weeks. I did have some people approach me regarding questions about next steps for Sandy Beach. And then I also received an email about a constituent's concern about the Sandy Beach decision tonight. That was it.
Great, great.
I had much the same on Sandy Beach. Also had a memo from the Rock Lake Improvement Association on PFAS. And I had the opportunity to speak on leadership at the Optimist Club last week to, to high school members from both of our public, or public and private high school, so.
Great, thank you for doing that. You're kind of becoming our liaison to the schools with your different presentations. So thanks for doing that.
They're, they're a fun group to talk with, so, yeah.
Appreciate that. Mary?
I also received correspondence on Sandy Beach Restaurant, several on the leaf pickup schedule, one on the policy for using the community room, also the notice for that JRLC meeting that Wendy, you reported on on behalf of Wendy. And I attended the Rotary Birthday Celebration and the RLI meeting on water quality.
Great, Steve?
I just had the emails on Sandy Beach and on PFAS.
Okay, great. In addition to everything else that was mentioned, and I got a couple, a couple contacts about Sandy Beach, three contacts regarding the Vanguard proposed development, which is across from Tyrranina Park. I had a chance to attend the Ad-Hoc Tree Committee and also the Rotary Anniversary. I got an inquiry about Vibrant Spaces grant that Legendary Lake Mills is working on. The county is hosting a legislative breakfast that Drake and I were invited to attend, so that'll be coming up next month, meeting our newly elected or re-elected local legislators to talk about, you know, issues that are important to us in the county. And then I got an inquiry about Martin Luther King Junior Day and any celebrations for that. So I think that's it. Okay, thanks, everyone. The next item on our agenda is questions and public comment. So the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting is called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments. There's also a sign-in sheet to fill out there. If there's anyone attending online that wants to speak, you can type your name and address in the chat feature. So I don't see anybody online other than staff. So is there anyone here in the room that would like to make public comment tonight? Great. Come on up, Anita.
Thank you. Anita Martin, we live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in Lake Mills. During my tenure on the county board, the last two years I served on the County Traffic Safety Commission. And during that time, one of the constituents reached out to me about the traffic patterns around County Road B and V, which is the area, that's kind of the proposed area for the new development. They were concerned already, and that was well before 165-unit multifamily housing development was being discussed. I looked at some of the information, and I am concerned about the traffic patterns as well as the parking. It looks like, if I understood this correctly, there'll be considerably less parking available than the current zoning code calls for. Forty-eight percent of the required inside parking, 75% of the required enclosed parking, and 47% of what's required for visitors. So it's, comes out to about 49, I'm sorry, 59%. That's a concern that really does need to be addressed, also the traffic patterns. Additionally, I think it's very important, if this goes through at the same scale that's being proposed or smaller, that the, I guess it would be, the city council action would remove the ability for ATVs and UTVs to go down there, because I think that would be a real safety hazard. The town of Oakland had a proposed development on Highway 18 and A that was going to be pretty comparable in size to what's being looked at for the current Vanguard, Vanguard proposal, about the same size. And they did shrink it down, from what I understand, to about 80 or 90 units, and they are still requiring bypass and turn lanes. So, and finally, my concern is also, I read that there's the consideration of having a pedestrian crossing on County B to access Tyrranina Park. That seems like that would be pretty dangerous, given the current traffic patterns. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. And I will just share with the audience the proposed development across from Tyrranina Park that has not come before the council yet. It is scheduled for a public hearing on a rezone application next week, Tuesday, is that correct, Drake, at the Plan Commission? So that's the next step for the public to make comment would be at the Plan Commission public hearing next Tuesday evening. And then in later steps, that would, would come before the council. So this proposed development has not come before the council yet. Drake, anything, was that correct? Would I hear anything to clarify?
Nope.
Okay.
Spot on. Six o'clock, Plan Commission next week.
Was it six o'clock? Okay. Usually it's at seven, so.
Is it?
I don't know if it's gonna be.
I may have misspoke.
Well, stay tuned that when the agenda comes out, we'll see.
It's moved around in time a little bit.
But next, next Tuesday is, it's.
Seven o'clock, you're correct.
The regular scheduled Plan Commission meeting next Tuesday. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment this evening? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment for tonight. And we'll move on to the city managers' report. We've got our usual monthly financial statements, police department, fire department, and ambulance monthly reports. Drake, anything else you want to report to us tonight?
We have forwarded the survey elevation data around Rock Lake to the DNR, so it's in their hands now. I've asked for what the next steps are, but have not yet heard back. So our role has been completed, and now we are waiting to hear what the next steps are from the DNR.
Sorry, I'm just making a note of that. Does anyone have any questions or comments for staff regarding the, the reports we have available for review tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to council business. So our first item is Resolution 24-72, which is a John's Disposal Contract Extension. Misty, can you please read the title of that resolution?
City Council Resolution 24-72, Establishing Garbage Refuge and Recyclable Pickup and Disposal Fees Pursuant to Section 556-20 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
A motion to approve Resolution 40, excuse me, Resolution 24-72, establishing, establishing garage refuge and recycling pickup and disposal fees.
Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Mr. Fields. Staff?
Sure. So we, prior to the autumn, the CIP increase that's in the contract, John's Disposal reached out to us and indicated that they would offer a no increase in their contract for, in exchange for a five-year extension. We have had a good experience with John's Disposal and don't have complaints regarding the service. And so staff did recommend executing the five-year extension, and the Polar Works Board also recommends approval of the extension. So for 2025, there would be no increase over current rates. And then in future years, it still is tied to the inflationary factor, CPI.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we please have a roll call vote on Resolution 24-72 related to the John's Disposal Contract Extension?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. The next five items on our agenda are related to claims against the city. If there's no objection from council members, I'd like to move those to the end of our council business tonight, because although we didn't have too many people speaking tonight, we do have some in the audience that I suspect are most interested in our next agenda item on Sandy Beach. So would people be okay with moving those claims to later in the agenda? Okay, thank you. So then, Misty, that takes us to letter G, which is Resolution 24-78, which is award or rejection of Sandy Beach Restaurant bids. Would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-78, Awarding or Rejecting Bid for Sandy Beach Restaurant Construction Project.
Thank you. So since this is a, we've got a couple of choices in this resolution, I guess we'll turn it over to staff to talk about first before we have, have a motion.
Sure. As you're all aware, on the November 5th election, a question appeared, an advisory referendum appeared on the ballot, essentially asking the community if the city should authorize the borrowing of approximately just over $3 million for the construction and development costs of a restaurant at Sandy Beach. No received between 58 and 59% of the vote. The city does currently have a bid, an open bid on the project. If you remember, we bid it before to have accurate costs before we went to referendum. That firm is Level Up. They were the lowest responsible bidder. So the council has two choices tonight. Since the referendum was advisory, you can vote to reject all bids, and that would end this process and end the restaurant in this current form, this project in its current form, or you still have the ability to award if you so chose. The city's architect, this will come up, I can speak on this on the next item. Staff, staff's recommendation, based on the results of the referendum, is to reject all bids and take a step back and schedule a work session to determine what the city council's vision, priorities, and next steps are for the redevelopment of Sandy Beach as a whole. There are a number of different projects that are planned for that area. We have, for the last year and a half, been focusing on the restaurant as kind of the launching off point. It would appear from the referendum that the restaurant as proposed in that question was not supported by a majority of the public. So this does offer us an opportunity to take another look at what we want to do, not just with food service, but with all of the other projects that exist out there. So this would halt all current work, except for the budgeted for and planned upgrade of the lift station that needs to occur regardless, and that's already included in our budget documents, so we would still proceed with that. But the, it is within this council's authority to do, take whichever action you would please tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we actually have three agenda items in a row that are related to the Sandy Beach development, and this first one is specifically related to the restaurant bid. So let's, you know, take that, take that one first. But I would recommend that we have some discussion first, or if people have some thoughts that they want to share, and then I'd be looking for a motion on Resolution 24-78 to specify either awarding or rejecting. So does anyone have any comments or discussion they'd like to make?
I'll go first.
All right, great.
I don't need my glasses. I guess I went back and took a look at our survey from December of 2022, and in that survey, 10% of the people disagreed with having food service in, at Sandy Beach. So either 90% were for or were neutral on that question. 71% preferred a casual restaurant, 72% preferred year-round restaurant, type of restaurant. This is interesting. 94% preferred indoor and outdoor seating, which is more than the people that actually approved of the restaurant. 42% preferred a banquet venue, so that was in the minority, and 36% preferred no tax increase. So we know that 64% would, would vote for some type of a tax increase, and it varies based on the different, different amounts. So the referendum results that we just got showed that 59%, roughly, a little bit less than that, voted no, and a little bit more than 41% voted yes. So that tells us about two-thirds of the people that would vote for a tax increase did indeed vote for a tax increase here. So about a third of those that would vote for a tax increase voted to the no side of things. So something about this didn't match up. I don't know if it was that maybe they wanted something that was only seasonal, or maybe they wanted a restaurant that was higher or lower than, than what was, than what was on the referendum. So there's definitely a, a large part of this segment, even though it's below the 50% mark, that, that was in favor of this, this type of referendum. So I guess what I'm leaning towards is, one of the proposals down below is to have a work session, and I'm not sure if we should be taking this current idea off the, off of our options until we have that work session. So I would actually make a motion to table Resolution 24-78, Award of Sandy Beach Restaurant Bid.
Okay, we have a motion to table Resolution 24-78. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. Staff, can you remind us, I believe the bids are time-sensitive, right? We would have to, if we wanted to award the bid, we have a date that we have to complete that by?
Dan is looking it up. I believe it's mid-December.
Mid-December, okay.
And the bid is no, will no longer be valid.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would like to make a comment.
Yep.
I, I appreciate all of the work that has been done to date, and I'm looking at the data a little bit differently, I think, Greg, than, than you are interpreting it. When I was looking at the, in that same report from 2022, the survey research report, there are 36% that really said they would not be willing to accommodate an increase. But if you look at the, the brackets of spend, there are fewer and fewer people that would want to be at the spend rate by which the current proposal is at. And I, so I feel that the cost at $3 million is a big showstopper, in my personal opinion, for our citizens, that paying, that the current proposal, even if we remove all of the options, which would put us at $2 million, is still above and beyond what the taxpayers, I'm looking at the 2022 and, and rationalizing the current result of the referendum kind of put together would conclude. And so I, I, and then I ask one question regarding, if we were to think of the different decisions we have on the table, and I appreciated the options also that Drake had put forward on food for thought or other considerations regarding approaches. The one question, and I guess it falls in the category of risk, that has been really bothering me, that it's, and risk is a very large, broad topic, but if I think about the question, which, which, which decision that we have here, may we regret later and why? I look at this particular one, both on the financial and on the risk of how the restaurateur's contract is set up, that to me has a lot of, I think, possible regret if you're sitting five years out looking in the rear. I just think it, it has a lot of things that I'm not certain, although I appreciate our citizens want food and service. And I'm picking those words specifically because in the survey, it didn't say restaurant in all of the questions. It says food and service. And I think that is a criteria is extremely important for us to be thinking about, but how you deliver that can be very different than the current program or the current project that we have on the table. And so I feel that it's not in our best interest to move forward with the project as it exists today. And so I feel differently regarding kind of the perspective that you have brought forward with your motion.
Sorry. Jeff, do you recall when the bids are valid through?
Yeah, Jeff's still here with Thrive Architects. They are being held till mid-December. I was just gonna look that up, Drake. I don't have that open yet. I'll chime back in on the, I'll chime back in on the chat when I have that date.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that would, that will be helpful to know what that exact date is. I guess I'd like to share some thoughts as well. I think it's important for everyone to understand, and I think our frequently asked questions did a good job of explaining that we did this survey back in 2022, and based on the results of that survey, which indicated that a significant majority of the community wanted a casual year-round restaurant, we went ahead with quite a few steps of design, you know, hiring an architect, doing an RFP for a restaurateur, and determining the costs. And at the time we did the survey, of course, we didn't have any of those costs. We'd been thinking somewhere in the range of one to one and a half million was maybe going to be what it would cost. And then once we finally got through all these steps in this summer, put a proposed project out to bid, it came back with just over $3 million. As soon as I saw that dollar amount and the gap, the significant gap between the amount of revenue that we could anticipate from a restaurateur, assuming all goes well for a restaurateur for 20 years, compared to what the taxpayers would be paying to pay off the debt, I felt that this project was a no-go, in my personal opinion. But I wanted to hear from our taxpayers. Now that we had the dollars, what, you know, do they still want a casual restaurant, even though they would know what it would cost and have a better idea of it? And I think they've told us that. So I feel that it would really be very irresponsible of us to move ahead with the project as designed. I agree with Mary, even at the $2 million level, I think there is still such a gap in the anticipated revenue versus what the taxpayers would have to fund, that I just, I don't think it's a responsible decision. And I think this, you know, nearly 60-40 vote is our, our citizens telling us that. Now, I guess I will say, as a side note, you know, I've talked to people anecdotally, and it is very hard to interpret what, what do the yeses and nos mean? Because I've talked to people that have said, "I do want a restaurant, just not that big, so I voted yes. I do want a restaurant, but just not that big, and I voted no." I've heard both.
Okay.
You know, I voted no because it was too big, or I voted yes because I want a restaurant, even though I think that this one costs too much, you know? So I think it, you know, I don't know what it was in each voter's mind in, as far as, you know, what they, how they decided yes or no. It's, it's hard to tease out some of the details. But again, I, I feel that that, you know, 58% no is very important. I want to honor that. And so I'm, I'm not in favor of tabling this. I would be in favor of rejecting the bids tonight. So Michelle or Steve, you have any thoughts you want to share? Michelle?
I'm gonna echo what you said. How, has anyone on the city council besides myself worked in a restaurant? Okay, so you know what it's like, and especially in this economy right now, where there's a lot of restaurants who are really struggling to make it. That, that in and of itself was a big concern of mine when we saw the sticker of this, of this project. And so for that kind of reason, as well as understanding that the public has indicated that they do not want us to go forward with this particular project, I also would be voting no on the tabling.
Any other discussion?
Lisa, I'm not.
Yes.
I see that there's a notification in the chat. I was just wondering if Jeff had put it in the chat.
Oh, okay.
If anyone who was logged in could tell us what might be in the chat.
I can, if you want, Drake. Jeff said that yes bids were to be held until mid-December. Bids are to be held open 60 days past due date of August 19th.
If I may add, this is Duane, your resolution in July, Resolution 2454, states that the bids received will remain open until December 18th, 2024.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm guessing that's our second meeting in December. Yeah, that's the day after our second meeting in December. So, okay, so that would give us two more council meetings to where those bids would still be available. Okay, any further discussion or comments, Steve?
I can say, I can agree with what the referendum came back with, is that this is more than what people wanted, wanted to look at. I look back at the survey that we did back in '22, and the economy's changed a lot since then, too, and people's finances are in a little different shape in how we're looking forward. As far as the restaurant itself, if we wanted to, I'm open to keeping it open during the work sessions, we could talk about it, see if there's something we want to do sizing-wise. That's why I would agree with Mr. Waters. We don't need to just throw it away immediately. We can sit down and talk about it. I think this is too much for what we're looking for, for what our constituents are giving back, or giving us feedback, but all options are still on the table until we say there are no options.
My concern would be, would we be able to meet and have a strategy session in time before December 18th?
Well, if the bids run out, then you've accomplished the same thing of saying no.
True story.
Any further comments? Mary? You look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I know. I am 100% in agreement. We need a working session. I am a. I am a big advocate for, uh, defining the criteria that are important and, uh, clarifying where we may have to make a compromise, if there, if one exists. I am, um, reflecting back on a conversation I had with, uh, Joe Mrazinski, who is the Milwaukee County Parks Assistant Director of Business Services. They are one of a very, one of only two that I'm aware of in the United States, based on my limited research, that is a parks department that actually runs a restaurant. And I spent a, a bit of time speaking with Joe and, uh, learned a lot. And one thing that makes me, um, apprehensive about this particular bid in this, um, case, or this, uh, project in this case, is the fact that, um, the expertise to run a restaurant, which the city would be owning the building, essentially running, running the business of fulfilling the restaurant with a restaurateur, et cetera, um, takes expertise. And I think we have a very talented, um, team here in Lake Mills. But, uh, based on my learnings from Joe, um, he has restaurateur expertise, and so do two full-time people in order to make his, um, their beer garden, um, programs, which are really interesting. I know I sent you all some research about the different ways that they've approached, um, providing food and beverage services in a multitude of ways. And so I'm, I'm pausing on, um, trying to think about it in the best interest. We've talked a lot about the interest of the citizens, but the risk to the city, I think financially and otherwise, is much larger. And it gets to the question of what we might, you know, regret or feel like we didn't get on all cylinders, looking in the rears if we were looking out five years. I still, um, I just feel that we don't have the right building blocks to make something of this magnitude, um, work in our best interest. So it's just a different, different lens, perhaps.
Great.
So the, the reason I'm suggesting tabling is that this current proposal ticks a lot of the boxes that the survey said was favorable. Also, we took the, uh, we took the base, um, the base building and added a lot of things on it to get to the three million dollar price. I don't remember what that base price was. I'd have to go back.
Two million.
Research. Two million was the base price? So there is that, that lower offering. And I just don't wanna take it off the table at this point until we have that work session.
I'll add one more thought. I'm thinking about, right, there was the two-point, roughly two-point-three million dollar base plan. There's some additional options that we could consider adding. Even looking at that lower amount, there is a, a substantial gap between the anticipated revenue and, um, the debt cost for our citizens. And, um, you know, I, I don't have any data on this, and I'm certainly no restaurateur, but I would assume that not adding an exterior deck, not adding, you know, additional seating on the second floor would affect the, the revenue that we could expect, you know, that a restaurateur could expect. Also, if I recall correctly, having this be year-round is requiring a different level of electric service. And so, which is more costly than what we might need to have. Again, correct me if I'm.
Uh, I have to talk to the electric department. I'm not sure that it is, it is necessarily being year-round, but being a full-service restaurant. So it's possible that a seasonal, full-service restaurant would require the same amount of electric service. Because of the implements that are necessary, uh, to be installed.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. That was something I was thinking might be a difference if, if we chose to take a different route. So, okay, those are my, so I guess those are my additional thoughts. Any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to table, um, action on Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-eight. Uh, can we have a roll call vote on that motion, please?
Quidno?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Ms. Schmager?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we still have a Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-eight that we can continue to discuss, or someone can make up?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-eight to include the, uh, city council rejects all bids for the Sandy Beach Restaurant construction project.
Second.
Okay, so, just so everybody's following, the motion is to approve Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-eight, but making the choice of rejecting the Sandy Beach Restaurant bids, correct? So that's a motion by Mr. Waters and seconded by Mr. Fields. Is there any discussion? Or further discussion? Okay, seeing none, uh, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-eight, uh, rejection of all Sandy Beach Restaurant bids?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, and I appreciate, um, all the work from all of our staff, our consultants that have worked on this, contractors, and our community, our, our citizens who, uh, took the time to inform themselves and to vote and to give us their perspectives on this. So, uh, we've got some housekeeping then to do of what's next. So our next item is Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-nine, which is a budget amendment, um, regarding, um, paying for the design of the restaurant. So Misty, would you read that resolution title for us?
City Council Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-nine, authorizing an amendment to the twenty-twenty-four capital budget and authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to pay or reimburse incurred costs and expenses from unreserved fund balance.
Okay, before we have a motion, Drake, could we just have you, um, explain what this task is?
Yep, so, um, I guess that the bare, the bare bones version is that we anticipated rolling the cost of the architect's services into the bu, long-term borrow. Uh, since we will not be borrowing, uh, for this project, um, this budget amendment changes that to cash from unreserved fund balance, um, to reimburse the city for costs incurred or pay any outstanding, um, invoices. Uh, and then it also, um, we will terminate the contract, the remainder of the contract, the final ten percent of the contract with the architect, and we won't incur any further costs, uh, associated with it. Uh, this does require a, uh, two-thirds majority to approve.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-nine, authorizing an amendment to the twenty-twenty-four capital budget and authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to pay or reimburse incurred costs and expenses from unreserved fund balance. That's a very long thing.
Second? Motion by Ms. Quidno, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Uh, so this is a budget amendment. Drake, um, would it be correct to say, um, if the council wanted to engage the services of, of, services of an architect, uh, moving forward on any, you know, revised, um, plan for food service there, that that wouldn't really fit under the current contract that we have? And that it would be better to, um, simply do a new contract? I'm just wondering if there's any use we would need, you know, could make out of that remaining money? Or if it just would be better to start fresh?
Um, so would Thrive engage with us on a future project? I anticipate that they would. You only have ten thousand dollars and change remaining, and it was for the, um, construction administration piece of it. And so, um, whether or not you chose, you needed an architect in the future or not, who you chose to engage with, um, to assist you in that process, um, that could be Thrive, it could be a new RFP process, it could be sole sourcing, if you wanted to, with a different architect. But I would say they fulfilled the services under their contract for the services that the city council has asked for. Um, the remainder of the services under the contract are for things that are not going to occur, um, at least in a timely, a timely fashion. So I don't believe there is a, um, reason to keep the contract open.
Thank you. Any, uh, discussion or questions on this budget amendment? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-nine, which is a capital budget amendment for authorizing use of fund balance for the design of the Sandy Beach Restaurant?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, so what do we do next? Our next agenda item is a discussion and a possible decision on the future of the Sandy Beach redevelopment. And Drake, thank you for providing a memo. You listed, um, a number of options that we can look at, both looking at, um, different ways of approaching food service and also maybe stepping back and re-looking at the larger, um, Sandy Beach redevelopment plan. So I guess I'll, um, open it up. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read Drake's memo. Um, is there any, um, discussion that people would like to engage in or any motion? Michelle?
I think it's, uh, I think it would behoove us to sit down and have a work session. The plan, or the proposed idea of what was going to happen at Sandy Beach is, Steve, how old is that plan? Seven years old.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a new council, we have a new administrator. I think it's worthwhile to take a look and revisit it, um, because I think that we, um, may have a, a different idea of what, um, what, what should go, what should look like down there. How better to use our funds to make it more functional for the people that, um, use it on the regular? And maybe even make it to where the city understands the asset that we have more than they already do. So I, I agree with the conclusion in the, the memo that we should really put it on hold, um, have a work session. And when we have a work session, I think it would, um, be a good idea for us to come with our own, like, concepts of what we think, based on what we know about what's the needs down there, come with our own thoughts and priority, uh, priorities. And then we can discuss exactly what that looks like and see if there's any similarities, similarly to the way we did in the strategy session. I think that we all have really great ideas, and I think we have great, um, um, hope for that space. And I'm excited to work with you guys on how exactly that would look.
Any other comments?
So I agree with you, Michelle. I like that you are thinking that, um, the conversation on priorities, this gets to the, the survey results, having a strong interest. So how do we fulfill those? And what can we afford to pull in with, you know, balancing the needs of the citizens with also the, the costs? And so, uh, I would like to, um, suggest, though, that, um, this restaurant piece has been, um, multi-years worth of a lot of really great effort. You know, two RFPs, a lot of, a lot of work to get to this point. And I feel like it, as a subset of the master plan, is critical and would ask that we try to fast-track at least the food service slash, whatever that might look like, food service and a few other key priorities that might align with a, a building or a, a, a building of some sort, whether it's a pavilion style or another, a, a smaller-scale building, whatever it may look like. Things that I know were noticed, such as like the showers, um, has been an, an interest of the citizens. If they, anything can go along with the building structure as a fast-track, um, to keep the momentum going. I'm thinking that, I, I don't know if, what the, um, disruption to the beach will be in putting a structure of any sort on the beach, whether we'd have to close it down. I mean, prime time to build is summer, but would, I, I don't know what is, where we would try to fit it in fall to winter. I'm just thinking about the timeline and if we could fit the restaurant replacements since, um, we've pulled this one from the table. Any alternatives, bringing them forward and fast-track that as a part of the master plan? I think I'd be interested in thinking about that.
Just to manage expectations of this body a little bit, um, depending on what option this council chooses specifically to food service, uh, you will be hard-pressed to complete a process prior to the deadline to submit a, a, a referendum question to the ballot. So if, if any piece of that plan includes the bill, the construction of a building over five hundred thousand dollars, you must have completed your process and approved a referendum question seventy days prior to April first, twenty twenty-five. There are no other elections in twenty twenty-five. So that will be, that is a hard deadline that you're all working with. Mr. Daley? Can you repeat how many days before that April election?
Seventy days.
Seven, zero?
Yes.
So late January, essentially, we would need to have referendum language. Is that my counting right?
If it's over five hundred.
Late January.
Yeah.
Late January? If it's over five hundred.
And I, I guess I'm, I'll, I'll give my thoughts. I also am in favor of having a, uh, work session, um, sooner rather than later, because I think, um, I'd like to keep the positive momentum, the interest. Um, it has taken us a long time to get to this point, and now unfortunately, we're not moving ahead with the restaurant right away. So, um, I think our citizens are anxious for us to continue redevelopment work there. I'm, I'm not as, um, uh, what's the phrase? Um, I, I don't feel strongly about fast-tracking, uh, permanent food service decision, uh, because I think that we can continue with our current model of providing food service. We may wanna restructure it, the, our finance director and I were talking about this earlier today. We may not wanna restructure how we charge for those, um, licenses, if we have food trucks. But I think there, I think this is an opportunity. We've got our boat launch and everything else we can view as a blank, blank slate, really. And what order do we wanna do all the rest of Sandy Beach? What got this council started on wanting to do a redevelopment? You know, we can look to Steve and to Dan and a few others that have been around for a long time to like, what really started this? And what, and, and going back to like, what are our criteria? What are we trying to accomplish? What are those priorities? And so I think it'll give us a good opportunity to reset those priorities and then give our staff some direction on, you know, what order do we wanna get things done in that's, that's realistic? And also, you know, figure out how we might wanna engage our citizens. We have people that have been waiting a long time for that sand volleyball court to, to move somewhere else. And people that have been hoping for new amenities there. And we have utility work, so there's a lot of things that we could talk about, I think, in terms of priorities, so.
So it would be, um, January twenty-first, twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty-five, is seven, seventy, seven, zero days prior to the April first, um, election. I would also just add, kind of building off of what you said, is for the last, I guess, year and a half, or I guess since I've started, we've kind of viewed the restaurant as the jumping-off point for the rest of Sandy Beach redevelopment. We can, we can flip the order of, of things. Um, we have dollars in the capital budget for, um, parking lot improvement. So there are, it's just a question, right? You, we were gonna build a restaurant and design the parking lot to best fit the restaurant that got put in. You can do that in the opposite if you want. Once you decide what kind of food service you want, um, you can design a parking lot to accommodate that. And, cause we roughly know where it's, where it's going to be placed. And then the other aspects, could we move the sand volleyball courts before that? Likely. Could we do utility improvements, um, in a future, in a, in a sooner-than-anticipated year in the mobile home park? Also probably yes. So, um, I guess as we're thinking about what this redevelopment and improvements at Sandy Beach look like, we have flexibility in how we fit those pieces together.
That's good to know, because if I recall before, it felt like it was, we have to do this so that we can do this, and then we can do this. Knowing that there's some flexibility, uh, gives, goes back to what I was saying about making priorities. So like the sand, the sand volleyball courts, I know that there have been multiple comments about the parking lot and how it needs to be, uh, bigger, as well as the problems with, you know, boat trailers taking up a ton of parking. I mean, these are the things I was referring to when I said bring a priority list. I mean, these are the things I was referring to when I said bring a priority list. And, and those are sort of surface level, but they do kind of get to what are our priorities? And in what order do we want to see them be executed? And how does that play out with what needs to be done underground, right? Because we know it's not just all literally surface level. There are so many other components that maybe, maybe we don't know or maybe we do know. But it's nice to know that we have a little bit more flexibility because I, like I said, I mean, I've been on here for about four years now or four years, I guess. And the way I remember it was that there was, it was pretty firm, like this is phase one, phase two, and phase three. So basically, I, I'm saying I like the idea that we have some and that when we come together and we come together with our ideas about what things should probably in our minds take priority, we can discuss together and make a list of, you know, here's what we want to see done first, second. And within that conversation, we can learn about the details and see if it's possible.
Yeah, I, I think there was a schedule that had been kind of set previously, but it's always within this body's jurisdiction, you know, authority to shift those things around. I would say, I would advise you to know what you want the end product to look like before you, you know, take on things that may not be conducive to what you and what the end goal is. So I think that, you know, coming to a resolution of what you anticipate being there is a, is a worthy goal to strive to in the coming months. Because a parking lot is gonna look differently if you're anticipating only offering food truck services versus concession stand services versus seasonal restaurant services. And other pieces of it may fit differently together. So that's all I have to offer for, for now.
Thank you for that. And I think, you know, building off of what you said, Michelle, I think another thing I'm interested in and I, I know there's some things that we need to be aware of are, you know, what are those constraints or encumbrances that we have? Like we have leases for, you know, we have leases for manufactured homes. We have leases for boat slips. You know, we have different things that take time, that would take time in advance planning if we were gonna make changes. And so, you know, we don't maybe even maybe know what all of those are. But if we think about reprioritizing, then staff can let us know, well, if you want to do this here, then it's gonna have this effect or it would have to be in, you know, two years out or whatever, you know, the issues might be. Also, I think we've had some indication that, you know, the lack of a permanent facility there has maybe had some consequences in park users' behavior. And so, you know, how can we help address, you know, some of that too and make this, you know, help this be a safe place for people to gather and recreate and enjoy our beautiful asset of the park and the lake? So just what have we learned, you know, in the time that the restaurant building hasn't been there anymore about public safety as well and how we need to make sure we're incorporating that into?
Yeah, I will say, I believe we had CSOs stationed at Sandy Beach for every weekend of the summer.
Yeah. So that was a big, a big help, I think, and that was very important, yeah, to have that. Greg?
I agree with a lot of the things that have been said. I think we should relook at phase two, phase three, phase four, and phase five and understand how they should be positioned. Of course, the restaurant has always been phase two because it's, it's important to the community. The community is, has led us to know over the last four years that it's a very high priority. And I, I think that we should keep that in mind, of course, when we look at, at our, at our rankings and how we want to move forward. But the restaurant's always been, been high on the list for the community, so we should respect that as well.
Thank you for that. Okay, so we've been having some discussion about the future of the Sandy Beach redevelopment. I'm hearing a general consensus toward putting everything on hold and having a, other than the work that's already planned in our budget, and having a work session. So would someone like to make a motion on that?
Do we need to make a motion on this? I think consensus.
You do not. If there's consensus, there's consensus to schedule, you can make a motion if you'd like to memorialize.
We have it as a decision item, so I just wanted to make sure that we're clear. Is, is everyone generally in support of having, moving forward with the work session as the next step?
Yes.
Okay, and I am as well. So, okay, so that's our, that'll be our next step. So thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone in the audience who was here maybe to, to learn about that, that process. So stay tuned and, and we do want to keep the momentum going and continue to look at what we can do next and keep this overall redevelopment project moving forward. So thank you again to staff for all the work that they have put into the last couple of years. And we still need you. There'll be more to do, so. Okay, so we're done with the three items on Sandy Beach. So we'll move on then to letter J, which is ordinance 1272.
Move up to I and B?
Oh, I had, I had suggested moving those to the end of the agenda. Would you rather?
I think there's people here that are, are waiting for that, actually.
Oh, okay, I did not know that. Sure, okay, we can move back to our, our letter B and do B, C, D, E, and F. So those are our claims against the city. Thank you, Greg, for alerting me to that. So Misty, let's go back to letter B then. So this would be resolution 23, excuse me, 24-73. Can you read that, please?
City Council Resolution 24-73, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by John Dale Regarding W-8009 County Road B, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. And why don't we have a, a staff overview of this first, Dan, if you would? And then we can go to a motion.
I guess I'll speak about the, the claims that are in front of you generally. You have five in front of you tonight. All of them have gone through the investigation process of our insurer. All of the claims have been recommended for disallowance by the insurer. Notices have been sent out both to the city and to the claimants by the insurer. My, I, I have examined the claims as well. Generally, I will say, state on the outset that I, I tend to follow the insurer's direction with regard to disallowance. That offers a contracted period in time for the claimants to file suit against the city of Lake Mills. If you are to disallow the claims, it, it reduces the statutory time for filing a claim against the city in, in Circuit Court to 120 days. So that's really procedurally what you're doing with this. You're not addressing the merits of the claim. You have been advised as to the potential for liability and the likelihood of, of liability in light of the municipalities, immunities that it enjoys by both the city attorney myself as well as the insurer. So on all five claims, I, I do recommend disallowance. The insurance company recommends disallowance. We will, after that disallowance, send out appropriate notice. And then the period of time for them to file a claim in Circuit Court will be initiated. If there are specific questions, I'm, I'm certainly happy to discuss. I will not go into the merits of the claim. I will not discuss the specifics, excuse me, the specifics of each claim ad nauseam or anything like that. I am confident in the investigations and the statements that have been gathered from staff on the, on each claim. And I am in agreement with the recommendations for disallowance.
Thank you. So what I would recommend that we do is take each claim separately, have a motion on a second and a vote on each claim individually. And then if there is a question about any specific claim, we can bring it up when that item comes up. So we've got resolution 24-73 that we've had the title read. Would anyone like to make a motion on that?
I move to approve Resolution 24-73, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by John Dale Daley Regarding W-8009 County Road B, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Second? Motion by Ms. Quidnaw, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Is there, are there any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 24-73?
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item, letter C, is Resolution 24-74 regarding a claim by Derek Powell. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 24-74, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by Derek Powell Regarding 125 Franklin Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 24-74, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by Derek Powell Regarding 125 Franklin Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quidnaw. Any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 24-74?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 24-75, a claim related to Nancy Gant. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 24-75, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by Nancy Gant Regarding Damage to an Automobile Located Adjacent to Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park Trailer Lot Number 19B, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 24-75, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by Nancy Gant Regarding Damage to an Automobile Located Adjacent to Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park Trailer Lot Number 19B, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Fields. Any questions or discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, on Resolution 24-75.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. The next item is Resolution 24-76, related to a claim by Michael Boland and Jesse Mansilla. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 24-76, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by Michael Boland and Jesse Mansillas Jr. Regarding Damage to Seasonal Residential Mobile Home Located at Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park 231 Shady Pines Number 2P, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 24-76 as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quidnaw, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-76?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And our final claim item is Resolution 24-77, related to Chris Lopak. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 24-77, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by Christopher Lopak Regarding 419 Campus Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. Motion, please?
Motion to approve City Council Resolution 24-77, Action on Notice of Claim and Claim for Damages by Christopher Lopak Regarding 419 Campus Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Misty, would you please call the roll on Resolution 24-77?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, so now I think that does take us to letter J, which is ordinance 1272, amending City Code Chapter 505. This is our third reading tonight. So Misty, would you please read the title of this proposed ordinance?
City Council Ordinance 1272, Amending City Code Chapter 505, Peace and Good Order and Creating Section 505-9 Sexting My Minors Prohibited.
Thank you. And before we have a motion, Chief Schroeder was here this evening. If you wanna, as long as you're here, you might as well just give us a summary of these ordinance changes.
Sure, I'm here. Back on October 15th, I spoke before the council, excuse me, and kind of went over. The reasoning behind proposing the ordinance change and adding the section prohibiting sexting, really, the issue we run into is what we define as sexting in this ordinance is becoming more and more prevalent, especially among youth in our community. So this is a step to add a, an enforcement mechanism for this offense that isn't as severe as the ones that exist currently. Currently, we are looking at delinquent offenses that are handled either through a referral to the Department of Human Services and ultimately the DA's office for a juvenile who commits this offense or a warning and there isn't another option in between those. So we really wanted to add a municipal violation option for the cases where minors are either possessing, sending, or sharing what we refer to as sexually explicit images. So I am here primarily to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Chief Schroeder? Michelle?
You had mentioned, I want to make sure I understand you correctly. You had mentioned that the enforcement before this ordinance should be passed was, was a referral to DHS and juvenile. So is this changing the enforcement or is this giving a different outcome for those particular kids that are getting this notice?
So it provides another option. So this provides an option to write a municipal citation that would go through the municipal court process and is not considered delinquent. The option of doing a delinquent referral is still on the table and is still available to us in cases where it's appropriate. But it just provides us a less severe enforcement mechanism, hopefully to prevent from getting to the more severe delinquent referral. And again, just providing options for our officers in enforcement.
Chief, maybe just explain that one second further. The referral would be constituted on a misdemeanor or felony charge. It's criminal in nature rather than a municipal ordinance violation.
Correct. The referral was, the equivalent charge for an adult would be a misdemeanor or a felony if we do a delinquent referral to the Department of Human Services.
And those, if I'm, if I'm correct, they do not get wiped clean at 18 or they do? If they're underneath the age of 18 when they commit this crime?
They don't get expunged or wiped clean. However, delinquent offenses and records are very restricted as far as access. So most people cannot access those records to find out if someone was convicted of a delinquent offense.
Okay.
And Chief, I wanted to just ask, and I asked you this at the first reading as well, but just to clarify, there is a provision here for possession. And so it, it strikes me that an adolescent could inadvertently be in possession of something because someone else sent it to them and not because they sought it out. So can you just clarify for the record how, how this ordinance would address this? And then how you think your officers would enforce that on a day-to-day basis?
Sure, I'll start with how the ordinance addresses it. The ordinance does say in section C.
C two.
It talks about prohibited acts two. Talks about possession of an image, photograph, or video of any person that was transmitted or distributed by another minor which depicts nudity as defined above in the ordinance. They do not violate it if all of the following apply. One, they didn't solicit it, okay, so they did not request to receive it. Two, they took reasonable steps to report the image, photograph, or video to a school or law enforcement official. And three, they did not transmit, distribute, or show the image, photograph, or video to another minor. So could someone still be in violation of this ordinance simply by possessing it even though they didn't solicit it or request it? They didn't share it with anybody and they didn't report it? Technically, by the rule of law, they could be in violation. And I think that's where we go to the second part of enforcement. The goal of the police department is not to enforce that type of situation. The goal of the police department in, in passing their requesting this ordinance is to really focus on those individuals who are sharing these images. And they are not only exposing exposing themselves to the image or they're exposed, but they're now exposing others to the image. The most common scenarios we run into are either people who are dating and they share images with each other and for whatever reason, that relationship goes awry and now they decide they're going to share the images that they have retained on their devices with other kids. Or they're just receiving images either from other friends, whatever it may be, and decide that they're going to share them with other individuals at school because they want to show them. Those are really the behaviors that we're focusing on with this ordinance. The hard part is writing an ordinance that captures what we want to capture without, you know, potential, I won't say exposure, but there's a potential that yes, someone's in violation, but we're not going to enforce that particular act because it's not really what the spirit of the ordinance is.
Thank you.
Chief, would you say the spirit of the ordinance is to educate?
It is to educate. I mean, ideally, sorry, ideally, we are, we're going to prevent these types of activities. So we want to educate and most of our contacts currently are education. We're issuing warnings for some of these violations unless they meet a criteria that we really just can't do that. The problem and what prompted this is when we can't issue a warning, the only mechanism we have is that delinquent referral for a misdemeanor or a felony. And we don't want to necessarily jump directly to that enforcement. But yes, education is a large part of this. Some of the things that I've discussed with SRO Johnson are doing some sort of curriculum for sexting, similar to, there's a curriculum for vaping or a curriculum for tobacco possession, of doing a curriculum for sexting that, working with our prosecutor in the municipal court, even with the issuance of a citation, maybe there's a diversion if they participate in this curriculum to educate them on sexting and the dangers of doing these types of activities. So education is, is a key, but you have to have teeth, for lack of a better word, behind what we're trying to accomplish in order to get people to participate in some of that education.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so that was our third reading of ordinance 1272. So would someone like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 1272, amending the City Code Chapter 505, peace and good order, and creating 505-9, sexting by minors prohibited.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fields, seconded by Ms. Quednow. Any further discussion? You see none? Oh, go ahead, Greg.
I don't have discussion. I just want to read this over one more time in my head real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Fields, for sponsoring this ordinance.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please, on ordinance 1272?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, that concludes council business for this evening. So we have, our next item is recommendations for future agendas. Do any council members have any recommendations? We know we'll be having a work session regarding Sandy Beach redevelopment. Any other items? Drake, anything from you?
Nothing to speak on right now.
Okay, I expect we'll have some items from next week's plan commission, maybe coming before us in our first meeting in December. So we can be watching for those. Okay, if there is no further suggestions, then we'll move to item 11, which is convening into closed session. So the council, our agenda item is to convene into closed session to discuss potential intergovernmental agreements for provision of fire and emergency medical services and joint construction projects with regional partners pursuant to Wisconsin Stat's Section 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So can I get a motion, please?
Motion to move into closed session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. Can we just have all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so that's 5-0. So that concludes the open session of our meeting this evening. So we'll be going into closed session and then adjourning after that. So that ends our broadcast. Thank you, everyone.